Order the City of Hendersonville City Council's second monthly meeting Wednesday, March 23rd, 2022. Two presentations tonight. First is parking fees and permit rates presentation. All right.
Good afternoon. Um, okay. Getting the presentation pulled up. Okay. So today we're here to talk about our parking rates and fees. And so I'm going to talk here a little bit about the process for how we've gotten feedback so far on parking and a little bit of history of how we've gotten to parking garage today. Um, so can I click on that or? Okay. I know that works. So on our website online, we have this story map that goes through the history of our parking garage and how we got to be talking about this point now. If you want to scroll into the timeline. So people can find this on our website. So you don't have to read the little details of it. Just want to have it accessible so you can read it. So way back in the year 2000 was when I believe we first started talking about a parking garage. We engaged with Walker Consultants and they did a feasibility study on three different sites for a parking garage around downtown, ranging from 58 to 176 spaces. In 2006, we again engaged with Walker Parking Consultants to consider a deck on the Dogwood parking lot. This was a four-story deck with 300 spaces, about $7.4 million. Then in 2013, we did workshops and studies to get feedback from our businesses about what needs, especially related to parking, there were. Total supply of parking spaces was the number one thing. And so that's why we've been working on that really since then. So going on 10 years now, or 20 from back to 2000. They also said from the respondents that parking bond and increased number of meters were the preferred way to pay for it rather than a general tax increase. In 2015, we contracted with Dixon Resources to do an additional parking study and they had some recommendations that we've since implemented, like the parking ambassadors, improved services, changes in permits. Then back in 2018 was when we were working on the hotel project and we had done the RFP for a hotel and event space on that Dogwood lot. Eventually, the developers found that it was not going to be feasible to do a parking garage on that Dogwood lot. So then we got to basically where we are today. Back in 2019, we had then again contracted with Walker to provide a design development and financial modeling for the current site for a parking garage. And last, two years ago, we purchased the property and demolition started last fall and site prep started in January and that continues on today. On the website also, it has current updates on what we've had going on. There's been some vibrations with some of the parking garage construction, which our contractors edifice have been great, working with our downtown businesses and making sure that those issues are improved. So that gets us to today where our parking meter and fee discussions come about. This has gone through our Downtown Advisory Board Economic Vitality Subcommittee, which very well combed through the Walker proposal and analysis. That then was brought to the Downtown Advisory Board, which met again for a long and detailed meeting to go through all of the ins and outs of that proposal. And then after that, we sent updates to downtown businesses through our online newsletter and handing out letters to all of the businesses to give them the opportunity for feedback. And then March 23rd, here we are today. So anyway, if you want to find any more information on parking, that's a great excellent site for it. We've got information on the budget, recordings of some of our meetings, as well as just a map of parking. So we can go back to the presentation. So whenever we met with the Downtown Advisory Board and when we sent out the information to ask downtown businesses for their feedback, we were really focusing focused on asking them these four main areas of question, which are, do we need a specific downtown employee parking permit? At what rate would it be feasible for a downtown employee for a parking permit? 24/7 reserved space recommendation are Downtown Advisory Board and folks have more or less suggested that those reserved spaces should not be allowed. And daily hourly parking rates. We had some discussions about what's considered a premium parking space. It's Main Street, the lots, et cetera. So now I'm going to go through what we currently have and what was in the proposal by Walker and then give you some feedback on what our Downtown Advisory Board and merchants have suggested. And so this is just to give you a summary of where we are, what's proposed. And then Brian's going to talk at the end about taking all of this information, what we have as our recommendation. So currently, the unreserved 24/7 spots are the ones that are available 24/7 but don't have your name attached to it. They're just available for folks who have those permits 24/7. They're $20 to $30 and the Walker analysis proposes $60. We have 8:00 to 5:00 a.m. or 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. S parking spaces, if you hear that. S permit, that's what that means. I always have to remind myself. Those are $10 to $20 and that is proposed to be $45 and that would be that downtown employee parking pass. We also have those reserved 24/7 spots, which are those spots specific. So if I bought a 24/7 parking space, I'd basically have a Jamie Carpenter's parking space for $30 to $40 right now. The Walker proposal is suggesting $120 or to discontinue that. Currently, we do not have a parking deck, so we do not have parking deck permits. But the recommendation for those going forward would be eventually getting to $120 per month, starting at $80 and increasing over time. That would be considered a premium spot for permit holders because it's a nice covered and secure area. So Downtown Advisory Board feedback for that again was about the reserved spaces and that that should be removed. There was some discussion with our Downtown Advisory Board on resident parking and specific spots for residents, but that there were no votes or no finalized discussion. It was just something that came up in the conversation. Also discussed was ways to make downtown parking for employees more affordable for businesses that would like to purchase some type of bulk permit for like businesses that have a lot of employees, but not all employees are there at the same time, working on different shifts. So there was some discussion on that, but not sure the feasibility with how the permits are purchased to be able to do that. Additional feedback from merchants after the letter that I sent out included potential or from when we asked what would be feasible for a downtown employee parking pass. And that was anywhere from $20 to $50, what we got back from folks. And then there was also some concern from nonprofits who have large amounts of permits and the increased cost to them. So then on our metered and daily parking. So currently, $0 per hour because we aren't charging for parking on Main Street and the avenues, but we do have a 30 or three-hour maximum with 30 minutes in the loading zone. The Walker proposal includes $1 per half hour with a three-hour maximum. Currently in our surface lots, we're at $0.50 per half hour with a $5 daily maximum. Walker suggested moving that up to $1 per hour. And it should note on here, which I don't have included, was the service lots and the deck did have a half hour free in the analysis. Then the parking deck, they suggest again $1 or a dollar per half hour with a $10 daily maximum. So no one would ever pay over $10 for the deck or over $5 for the lot, the surface lots. So back to the discussion of the Downtown Advisory Board and our committees. The Advisory Board does believe that Main Street should be considered premium parking and could be priced as such compared to the deck and the surface lots. They would also like to offer 30 minutes free for all spaces on Main Street and the avenues or a lower price for the first 30 minutes for people who are just coming in for a very short, quick trip. Whenever we had put that out for downtown businesses to respond to, we had suggested or asked what their thought was on having the 30 minutes free for the first half hour. And there was just some questions and concerns about enforcement and that possibly being exploited, kind of like the loading zones are. But they generally felt like that would be helpful. So now as we get into Brian's recommendations and further discussion, we always are going to bring back this parking demand triangle and you're going to see that over and over and over again because the reason we have to have this parking management is because parking can be available and free and cannot be convenient or can be convenient, available and not free. So basically, right now, our parking is free and convenient, but is not available. And so by putting in a parking management program, it will be convenient and available. So people will have the ability to go to those stores that they want to go to more Additionally, on our current parking situation, parking right now is at 85% to 95% capacity. So this creates traffic issues, gridlock, people circling around looking for spaces. So again, it goes back to making those most convenient spaces unavailable. There's also no available parking permits. So if someone wanted to buy a parking permit, they can't right now. This has caused a lot of issues for our downtown employees who can't find a place to park without getting ticketed. So they'll park somewhere and then try to move their car every couple of hours. Right now also enforcement is minimal. We have one full-time parking enforcement supervisor. She occasionally has to split her time as a crossing guard, but we are working on hiring a second full-time parking ambassador. Again, whenever we have the meters in place, that's going to substantially increase their ability to enforce parking because the way they do it right now, they mark without touching the tires, but marking where the tires are and walk back around to see if those tires are still in the same place. So it's a very time-consuming and very difficult way to manage parking. And so they are, our parking supervisor is very excited to have these meters in place. And so then now I'll turn it over to Brian.
Madam Mayor, Members of City Council, good to be back. Glad to be here presenting today. I do want to clarify Brian's recommendations. I'll say staff's recommendations. I don't want to, I don't want my name on all of this.
I agree it is Brian's recommendation.
Okay. I've been, I've been outvoted. These are my recommendations. So, you know, after hearing everything from our consultant and then doing the great work of going into the Downtown Advisory Boards and talking with the Economic Vitality Subcommittee of that board, it's really important for us to get that feedback and incorporate it and not just take, you know, we can take any consultant's plan, right? And just wait in front of you. I don't think that's going to be as effective in getting to where we want to be as a community. So what we did, hearing that feedback, is try to find the middle ground because, right, we've got a new asset coming in, but we also have to pay for that new asset with the goal of having available and convenient parking. We know it's not going to be free anymore. So from the rates and fees suggestions, so this is where we've ended up. And after these two slides, we'd love to hear feedback. We can stop during these slides and talk about it. So shoot questions when you have them. So meter and hourly parking on Main Street and the avenues. We're suggesting this be $2 per hour with the first half hour free with a three-hour maximum still. The surface lots, so Dogwood, Apple, Azalea, Maple, all those surface lots, we're suggesting $1.50 per hour with the first hour free, five-hour max in the surface lots, 10-hour max in the deck. And so what you're seeing is kind of a, we're coming down a little on the less premium spaces and up a little, well, not actually matching the Walker proposal on the Main Street proposal, just based on what we heard for having a tier difference between premium spaces and non-premium spaces from the downtown group. On the monthly permit side, we're recommending $25 per month for the top floor of the deck and the Dogwood lot. So this would be our employee permit parking. So coming down from that $45 recommendation, but up from our lowest cost right now, which is $10 to park in Dogwood. So meeting in the middle, we do need to generate some revenue, but trying not to have such a harsh impact right out of the gate, especially for those like nonprofits and employees. For the 24/7, I re-titled this between, this was the unreserved 24/7. When I was reading that, I was like, that doesn't make sense. 24/7 surface lots, you can go in, park anywhere in the lot, but you don't have Jamie Carpenter on the, on your exact space. So the example would be the Apple lot with Skyland and Beverly Hanks parking in that lot with the 24/7 spaces, starting at $60. And then the deck permit on any floor, starting at $80, matching the Walker recommendation. Again, hearing from the Downtown Advisory Committee and staff's perspective also is to remove the 24/7 reserved single space. And if we do implement that, we would want to charge a high premium. If council so desires, we would recommend the $120 per month. And one key change is changing the enforcement hours from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. This provides time in the morning for folks that might be visiting Main Street from a local perspective to come in, visit their stores before enforcement begins. So I'll pause there for a moment before jumping into the next slide. Okay. Okay. And lastly, loading zones, we're recommending maintaining dedicated 30-minute and reserved zones on the avenues and the 30-minute spots on Main Street. The citizen discount discussion would be something we'd look for guidance from you all at this point. We're not recommending that right now, but if council so desires as a group, we'd love to hear that. The next steps also from a Main Street kiosk placement, we also want some input on kind of your values here. Do you want more minimal clutter, minimal impact, or more availability, or somewhere in the middle? We'd kind of really like to hear that. And after this meeting, the next steps are to start designing where those meters go, procuring them and installing them. And then the same thing for the deck. If you have any really specific things we want to see on the deck gated meters, like being able to drive up, have something on your car, gate raises, you can come straight in, that type of technology. We're right now recommending taking coin, cash, and card and having just a nice, good, holistic deck meter that people can use. So that would be our next steps coming out of this meeting. So with that, we'll, we'll take any guidance or direction from council.
Comments?
I just want to hand to council members something that I was asked to give today. Apparently, when some people downtown were looking at the online materials, they were afraid that the 30-minute free zone had been dropped. And so I was asked to share this with council. So this is just a letter from several members of downtown that wanted to make sure that that was maintained. So I'm just, I'm the courier, so to speak, which is supporting exactly what's up there. It just wasn't on the online materials. And so I think that was their concern. If you're looking for people that agree with us, that's a list of people that agree with Can I ask a question, Brian? In your second to last slide, the one before that. So with regard to the monthly permits, and those would be available literally to anyone that wants to buy them.
That's correct.
Right. So this, whether you're a business on Main Street or a resident who wants to have a spot in the deck, anybody
Absolutely.
can buy one of those. Can they be transferred? Like in other words, can somebody buy one and then sell it on eBay or something like that?
No, we do not allow that.
Right. I'm just saying.
Yeah, but
That, you know, the way this world works, come Apple Festival, who knows what crazy things could potentially show up.
It would be tied to their tag. Yeah. Right.
So that's the enforcement part is you go around, look at the tags and that tells you if they haven't from yet.
Yeah, I'm actually, for example, our new permitting system, which is great, I used to just take my tag and if I changed vehicles, I brought my tag with me. I actually have to have my vehicles registered. I got ticketed last week, so.
You didn't have to volunteer that much.
Tsk, tsk.
What happens when you have babies?
Exactly.
Jerry, do you know if the people that signed this sheet, do you know if they've been participating in all of the downtown advisory meetings that have been happening for the last three years? Because I know that there's been lots of input sought from the downtown businesses.
I'd love to go back in and read the letter and things that we sent out, but I think we had put what their feedback was on that first half hour three, but it was also a lot of information, so it's easily lost. But Mark, he is on our advisory board and I spoke with him today. We do stream those meetings online and I know several of them watch them, but I'm just trying to look through the list.
All I know is at least two members said to me, so they must have looked online at the materials for today's meeting and it said on there, $1 for 30 minutes. And they were, and then they said, we discussed in the downtown advisory meeting during the half hour. And they were concerned that it got left out. And I said, y'all need to, if you would like for me to take something to the meeting, I'll be happy to take it. I know at least two of them were in the downtown advisory meeting.
Yeah, we didn't put any official recommendations from the advisory board, just we want to include what they've discussed on that. So what was presented here today wasn't, it was taking all the information from them and from businesses all there. So I think, I think that kind of just shows that we've got response from what they've wanted on that, I would say. But we've gotten good feedback as far as having that first hour, half hour free.
Right. So to answer your question, I know at least two.
Yeah, it looks like, yeah, a good chunk of them are involved or at least pay attention to the meetings and the emails.
So I know I would like to see us do some sort of prepaid parking card for residents. I know when we, they put in the parking garage in St. Augustine, that helped alleviate a lot of people's concerns and not everybody got it because it still puts onus on the resident to call up. We did it through the water department there, but wherever we happened to do it, hey, I want to buy a preloaded card, we could probably do it online, I don't know. And they get a little bit of a discount per hour because they bought a prepaid card.
And is it a, that's for the deck, right?
Well, it would probably, it'd probably be easier to do it. I mean, I don't know how we would do it now that we're doing different.
Do you even need a card? You'd just pay online ahead of time.
I guess. I don't know how we would figure it out, but I just think, and I've heard from many a resident, that I think that would make the pill a little bit easier to swallow. But they have the same rate, like St. Augustine has the same rate everywhere, whether you park in the garage or on the street. So I don't know how we would manage that with us having, you know, different rates. Or maybe it's just a prepaid
Like you just have an account, you just keep putting money on it.
And it's just the resident rate is, you know, $1.25 an hour, $1.15 an hour. I don't know.
Let me just, just question, I don't know the answer to. Did they, does St. Augustine give the first hour free or 30 minutes free? Or is it, do you pay right when you get out of the gate? That's one thing that
I don't remember getting anything for free. I just remember them taking, because there were meters in St. Augustine before they built the garage, but they went from $0.25 an hour to $2.25 an hour.
Yeah.
And so everyone who was a resident in St. John's County, not just St. Augustine, got, you could go and get this prepaid card. And so that's kind of what I would envision for us, is you could go online and get this prepaid card and that's on you. And if you don't want to get that prepaid card, then you don't get the discounted rate. So I think it's just something that we could offer that would make the pill easier to swallow for residents, but also we're not taking the risk of every single resident, really taking advantage of it.
How do they know if you're a resident?
Your driver's license.
That's part of the, were you registered to pay your card? Yeah, okay. That's what I was going to ask.
I mean, it'd probably be better to reach out to them to figure it out, but.
So it's a resident of the county?
They did it of the whole county, yes.
They would just use their license with that address?
Mm-hmm.
What if they didn't have like a recent license or something? They moved or like they retired there? I don't know. I'm just looking at like
And they should have an up-to-date license.
It just sounds really complicated.
Is that the kind of thing that tech people with apps can do easier than we can think about doing?
When we, when we discussed it, we thought if we did offer something like this, that it would only be through the Park Mobile application and letting us explore how possible it is first. But until we got direction from all of you that this is definitely a high priority, we didn't want to dig down that, that rabbit hole yet.
I mean, I think we should at least explore it, to say we tried.
On the Park Mobile app, can you, can I just say, I'm going to put $50 on my account?
Yeah.
I think you can probably load it.
Yeah. Because I could see where definitely
You load your cards on the account. So, yeah, you load your vehicle, load your cards. It's super easy once you get everything in there.
It is really.
Yeah.
And, and with the app, so something rides around and takes pictures of license plates all day long. And that's how it's charged, just like they do when you go through the toll booths the other side of Charlotte. Same concept?
Yeah, we ride around and enforce. So if something's, if a plate pulls and it's not paid, that, that car would get a ticket.
Okay. So the person that's enforcing is really not walking then, or I guess, yeah, they're riding around.
Our proposal be is part of, and then one thing is we think about, we're thinking about convenience, but also thinking about how we're going to manage parking and generate revenue is part of this is to be more efficient and to not only pay for the garage, but also pay for a license plate, a vehicle and a license plate reader that would, could go through the downtown, read the meters and manage the parking the way we want to so that we don't get into the concern where somebody's abusing the 30 minutes free or the hour free because that's, that's a great benefit, but if people are abusing it and it's not helping the businesses, then it's counterproductive to do that. So we want to make sure we have the tools we need to, to make sure we're enforcing those, those 30 minutes and this one hour. So we've got, part of this is, it's along the lines to make sure we have enough revenue to cover all those things we, we want to do to make an efficient system.
That's what I was wondering about the half an hour free thing. Is that going to be hard to enforce? Because right now, they're already abusing the policy that we have in place now.
We talked about that.
And 30 minutes seems to be easier to abuse.
So how that would work regardless is they would still have to put in at the kiosk or on the Park Mobile app. So it would be like they're putting in for the meter, but they've been given that 30 minutes for free. And I spoke with the, the folks who were concerned about that today even, and they fully understood that they'd still have to put, like, put it in on the kiosk or the Park Mobile app because otherwise then the enforcement is just pretty impossible to do because you don't know if they've been there for 30 minutes or not unless they've put it in on the, the kiosk or the meter that way. So that would be, it would all be in the system. And so then, once they get over that 30 minutes, it would start to charge on the kiosk or the app. I'm not sure how the technology works.
What if they didn't use that?
Yeah. What if they just stopped?
They're not going to. They're going to just pull in there?
They'll get a ticket.
They're going to take it.
So the only way you get your free 30 minutes is use the kiosk or the app?
Yeah, same, same as with the surface lots already. If, if they haven't put it in, in the kiosk or the app in the surface lot, then they'll get a ticket.
That's a lot of work for somebody to essentially have to make laps every 30 minutes to detect the cars that are not registered to a parking, to the app, right?
But wouldn't they be doing that? Well, I guess the question is, would they be doing that anyway?
Yeah.
I mean, they're going to be doing it every 30 minutes anyway.
What is the frequency that they do it now?
Well, there's one person, there's no way. That part of the problem with the system we have now is they're lucky to get around every couple of hours. And the idea of going to the meter readers and to having two people is that we are in the area much more often and, and, and this will actually help parking all over the city where we have other two-hour zones that we can, they'll be in vehicles and they're not spending two hours walking down Main Street and then having to get in a vehicle and drive to other parts of the city. They're going to be in a vehicle, they'll have the technology to do it and then they can circle through and then hit our other places where they need to hit too, so.
On the avenues, would the gizmos be able to read license plates for people parked in to end or do you have to literally walk over there and like take a picture of it?
I don't know the answer to that.
We do have our parking consultant on. I don't know if Jeff, if you can be unmuted or if you know the answer to that question. or if you know the answer to that question. Jeffrey, yeah, you got?
He's raising his hand, so. Yeah, yeah, wouldn't you let me unmute? That's why I raised my hand. So.
We've got you now.
Yeah, can you repeat the question? Because I, I do know the answer, I just want to confirm that I heard it correctly.
The question is, for the cars that are parked on the avenues, which is front to back, how do you read the license plates?
Yep. So the vehicle drives by, and in that very moment of the window between the front bumper and the rear bumper of those vehicles, it will automatically scan that license plate. And I've personally used these, we use them for our own parking studies for occupancy and turnover projects. And as you just, you drive down the road and it just bing, 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 it reads every license plate as you drive by.
That's nuts.
Now, temporary plates or bike racks will block that, so there are some, you know, misreads or non-reads, but the enforcement officer can, can, you know, handle that at the time.
We're gonna pretend you didn't say that, especially the bike rack part.
I always give too much information, I apologize.
That's all right.
Thank you.
That's wild.
And Lindsay, back to, I was just looking at my Park Mobile app, and there is, and we would have to investigate, there is a, a section in here called promotion codes. My guess is there may be a way to deal with the promotion codes.
Maybe we do a promotion code, we could put it on the water bill, I don't know. I don't want it to be difficult.
Of course, that, let us look into it, because that may, that may get passed around, so.
Right.
Hey, I mean, come on, all these things, I'm like, if somebody parks too long, I'm like, if? That'd be day one.
I mean, there's gotta be a way to do something. So I would ask that we ask staff to at least look into it a little bit more. Because I know a lot of people, they're gonna light me up if I don't say that we tried.
Do you mean to find a way for, would, should it be Hendersonville or Henderson County?
I think it should be Henderson County, just.
I think it's administratively much easier to determine if somebody's from this county than it is to determine if somebody's from the city.
I would agree.
And, and certainly those are people that are coming downtown just as often, if not more than city residents.
I would agree. And we don't have to do it forever.
And, and what I'm hearing is that they should pay something.
They should definitely pay something, it just was, would be less than, say, tourists or visitors or whatever.
Well, I, I think, it sounds to me like we have the tech tools in place to support the 30 minute free. I do think there is going to be, this is, I'm 53, I can speak to this generation, there is going to be some heartburn of having to, you know, register it when you go downtown, but I've also learned to accept that that is, if I want to continue living in this world, I'm gonna have to do things like that. So, I mean, it's just, it's just the way it is. So if all I gotta do is when I get there, hit the app that I'm parked, or, you can do that from the app, right? You don't have to go to the kiosk.
That's right.
All right, just hit the app that I'm parked, and I get my 30 minutes free. And if I don't hit the app that I'm parked, that's gonna be a problem. Potentially a problem.
And we think that that can be policed effectively to, I guess I just like know how people are, and they're not gonna even register the app, and they're gonna pull in, and they're gonna park for, you know, 30, 40, 50 minutes, and, and then just leave.
And they're gonna get a ticket in the mail.
I mean.
If the parking enforcement person made the lap in that hour that they were there.
I mean, I, from, I, I think we're gonna get a lot better at doing that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's gonna be better than we are today, because now we've got people staying hours without making any payment in our surface lots. So is there any perfect system? I think, you know, I think Jeff and the folks on Walker would say there is no perfect, the, the perfect system would be something we wouldn't want to live in our community, I mean, you wouldn't, this room would be filled, filled every meeting because people would be so frustrated. So I think this is a much better system, we can get it started, we can tweak it over time.
Right.
And, and it's, it's gonna continue to evolve, it's gonna be a living, breathing issue as we go forward, as it's always been, parking's always been a, a living, breathing, I mean, how, you know, Mayor, how, how long have I been talking about parking? So, so, you know, so, since the beginning of time, I think we go back and look in the minutes from the 1950s, people were complaining about parking, so, on Main Street, so.
Debbie, do you have any opinions on parking downtown?
I know that it's very frustrating at times for me and other people that, that I know that go downtown, preferably to McFarland's Bakery, and a lot of people that I talk to are concerned that when the free parking do go away, they feel like they, that it's costly and not beneficial.
I think because we do have several stores that are pop in, pop out, then the first 30 minutes being free is gonna be important.
Plus, I mean, I'll add, I mean, if you park one block off of King or Church, it's all free. And that's the same as parking at the mall and walking in the mall. You know, so the reality is, we do have a very contained area that is free, it's not like Asheville where everywhere you drive in that city, there's a, there's somebody either gonna tow your car, or they're going, you gotta pay a meter. So for people that are dead set on not paying anything, they're just gonna walk one extra block to come to Main Street if they're really that concerned, you know, so they can, they can do that.
And the enforcement hours of nine to seven, those businesses that have the pop in and out of people, those are like, you know, McFarland's Coffee Shop, a lot of those are earlier morning type business, and so we're not even starting the enforcement hours until nine o'clock anyway. So I feel like that's gonna help them substantially, just with the type of business that they do.
I just wish there was a thing you could put on your car, and when you park it, it knows you're there, it registers on the app automatically, you don't have to like touch your phone. That's too much.
I think there are those things, they're just really expensive.
Yeah, that's also Big Brother, big time, yeah.
I mean, you would have, yeah, I mean.
No, no, I get it, I, I.
So are we saying that we do want to have the first 30 minutes free, or are we saying we, okay, I was getting confused there for a second.
That's, that's the direction we took, the first 30 minutes free on Main Street, first hour free on the avenues and lots and deck.
No.
Avenues and Main Street are 30.
Oh, yeah.
Deck and surface lots are hours.
That's right, sorry.
I think that's good.
How about, I'm sorry, excuse me.
No, you go ahead.
So person not from Hendersonville comes to the deck and parks, there's gonna be like a kiosk where they put money in, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And then we're gonna do away with the all-the-time reserved Jamie Carpenter spots?
Correct.
Yeah, I think we should definitely get rid of those.
Why are you making that smile?
I'm looking, Angie has something to say, it's, oh, except for, oh, we do have, we do have some spaces associated with an agreement with Tom Fazio to buy the property, that in that agreement, they get, they get, how many spaces? Eight spaces on the ground floor?
Reserve 24/7.
Reserve.
They have to pay.
They have to pay, yeah. So they'll have to pay the reserve.
Of the deck?
Yeah.
Okay, that's supposed to be my ground floor, okay.
And then they get some, they get spaces, they have to pay for the spaces on the top floor.
On the top, eight also, because they had 16, so it was part, the deal that was negotiated to replace their 16 spaces.
And I, I believe what was in your presentation is, none of the spots are reserved, in the sense of like, it has your name on it.
Except those sixes are.
Sorry, other than those sixes, yes.
Correct.
The rest of them are, it's, you have a spot, but you have to find it every day when you go.
Right.
And that only applies to the deck?
Yes.
There is no surface lots that have the same reserved?
There are some surface lots that will have that reserved capacity.
Okay, like now?
Not reserved, but 24/7 permit, you could go, you can go to Apple Lot if you have the permit, and you can go park in Apple Lot.
Or you can go to Apple Lot and pay your money and park there.
Right, so all of the surface lots?
Yes.
The programming isn't completely detailed out. You know, right now, Spruce, Apple are completely 24/7 permits.
Right.
Azalea is a completely, well, mostly coin-fed metered lot, Maple, then there's Maple Annex, which is all permit. So we're gonna work through that to try to find the best solution.
Okay.
And we don't have all those details.
We'll come back, because that'll be some of the historical stuff that we had, the council had to work through, but we wanted to get the basis for the meters and the rates, then we can come back and deal with some of these other historical locations.
Are we having the discussion about the kiosks now?
I'd like to get some values, that way when we start designing where the meters are placed, we're either trying to find that happy medium, we're putting a lot of kiosks out there, so it's very available, or we're putting very minimal, so there's not much clutter. So knowing we're, we're gonna try to hit the sweet spot, but if there's any really like burning desire from council that we should have as little as possible, or we should have them as, as available as possible.
Where are they gonna look like?
We'd like to know that. It'll look like the existing kiosks.
Do they make prettier kiosks?
Can we?
My opinion is, my opinion is less kiosks, that's my preference, and do signage instead with a QR code to link you directly to the app, as opposed to having large, expensive, space occupied kiosks.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's just, whether you have it on your phone or, I don't know, I mean, I think there should be at least one in the block, but having, I don't know, how many did we originally have that we were buying?
It was anywhere between four to six, and six would be a lot.
Uh huh, and that seems like excessive to me. And if there's a sign that says parking is regulated by.
Park Mobile.
Park Mobile, you take your picture, you scan your QR code, and then you do it from there, and you don't actually even have to walk down to the kiosk.
I agree.
Okay, so minimal, minimal.
I'm with minimal.
Minimal, minimal, okay.
When you said four to six, you meant four to six per block.
Correct.
I was like, four to six, you meant per block.
Yeah, what was the total number for downtown, though? It was crazy.
We had 50s.
Fifty-six or something.
I mean, I think.
Four times seven, six times seven, I mean.
Two per block would probably be enough, wouldn't it? One on either side.
And, and we gotta do the, we'll try to place them, because you also got the avenues too, so we'll try to place them at, at a good location so that you can kill a couple of birds at once, you know, so that, you know.
Yeah, I mean, if you put them on the corners, right, they were on opposite corners.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll rely on Walker, kind of, and we'll do a walk around and kind of look and see what's convenient and.
I would like to know if they make better looking ones.
I'd like to ask one question, and that is, I know there's no way to get an exact number, if the hours were nine to six rather than nine to seven, is there any way to find out what we think, what hit we're taking with regard to that? I mean, I know you don't know sitting here, I just, I would like to see if we could figure out what that would be, because I think currently it's still six, isn't it?
Correct, it's eight to six. And we, we can talk with Walker about that, it's more of an enforcement aspect than it is really a revenue generation tool.
And it's a management too.
It's more about management than.
Because if you do it to six, then some of your downtown restaurants are gonna be impacted more with, there may not be enough spaces on Main Street to, to benefit the restaurants, right? I mean, because you're gonna have employees and residents incoming there, so.
I guess my thinking was, just, we're putting the meters in, not change the hours at the same time, just as far as number of changes happening at one time, that was my only comment about six versus seven. Not practically six or seven, just everybody seems to know now it's at six.
Yeah, we'd have to have a lot, all of this, we have to have a lot of public education and, we've got a great person to do that.
And I realize you're bumping it up, because you're starting at nine rather than eight.
Yeah.
So that's another change. I mean, that's obviously, for some people, beneficial change. One more question, because somebody's gonna ask me this the moment I leave this meeting. The parking deck again, I know you had to slide up, what is the parking rate per hour or per 30 minutes in the deck?
So it's gonna be a dollar fifty per hour.
Okay.
First hour's free.
And a 10-hour max.
Correct.
It's a $10 max, $10 max.
And you wouldn't pay more than $10?
Yeah, for a 24-hour period.
And the, the Main Street Avenue parking three-hour max means, if you're there after three hours, you're getting a ticket?
Correct.
Correct, okay, no, yeah, okay.
And I assume that the app wouldn't let them.
They won't be able to buy more.
Buy more than three hours, yeah. The only thing I had questions about was the employee parking permit. I know we had feedback from the merchants, I assume that was the business owners and not the people who are working in the business.
Yeah, from the letters, it was from business owners, but we do have several downtown employees who are involved with us pretty regularly. That $20 was roughly what they had suggested, something that as we get it going in the new system, we'll have the data to be able to tell us what is the right price point for it, because another suggestion from them, especially with our seasonal economy, is, you know, January and February might be a little tougher for downtown employees, rather than summertime when the restaurants are very busy and lots of tips coming in. So I think that that, from what I've talked to people and from my understanding, it might be just we see what that rate, how the, how the demand handles, the rate that we've got at $25, and that seems like a feasible amount.
And the employees would have to get that themselves, or we would have the business owners purchase them, so we don't have to verify that people work in downtown.
So we have several businesses that will buy them for the employees, but instead of it being a specific downtown employee rate, that would just be that eight to five rate, or eight to six rate, whatever that time was.
Okay. I'm a little hesitant on the $25 an hour, just, it wasn't that long ago that I was making 215 an hour as a server, and $25 a month could really add up, especially in the months when you're not making a lot of money. It doesn't sound like a lot, $25 a month, but it can be. And our employees are the, you know, the downtown employees are what make downtown so great. So I would love us to entertain a little bit less than that, but if we want to try that at first and see what we can do, and maybe we can get away with lowering it instead of upping it later, I would be okay with that, too.
And, and I would say to, the point made earlier is, outside of Church and King, there is still free parking.
They can still park, yeah.
That, that, that has basically been our downtown employee parking, and so, and that's where we, we want the employees to park, more or less, because we don't want them parking on Main Street or within those avenues, because that's where, you know, the customers should be parking rather than the employees right now. So I think that having the permits will be able to open up more for the people who want to buy the permits, but then also open up potentially some of those free spaces that are a little harder to get for the downtown employees that we've got.
Yeah, I did have, some people expressed to me some safety concerns, and I know a couple times when I worked at Brandy's, I had to park on Washington, and, I mean, it's not that I feel unsafe in Hendersonville, but walking to Washington at 11 o'clock at night by yourself is a little iffy. So I think whatever we could do, you know, for the employees that are parking in those free spaces, we might want to look at some things that we can do to make it feel a little bit safer, because it's a little dark back there.
Yeah, and that, yeah, well-lit and safer parking regardless, I definitely agree with.
If I could add one thing to that, too, is, you know, part of the system is making sure that we're generating a parking enterprise that then allows us to invest in other parking resources in other areas of the downtown, right? Because the decks can be great, but it is up on Fifth Avenue, so a Brandy's employee, it's gonna be a long walk to go to the top floor of the deck. So having the correct rates, having the correct meters rates is gonna give us more money to invest in additional parking resources in other areas of town, lighting, things like that.
That's a good point.
Anything else? Any more guidance? Okay.
The only one thing I would like to mention, the next, another next step is, we will be coming to you, like, the official action will happen with a fee schedule amendment. So that will happen when we're ready to turn on the rates when the deck opens, and that will be in action by this board, so that's, you'll get a fee schedule that reflects all of these things we've discussed, and then you'll take a formal motion on these items.
Will that be this year's budget, even though we're not ready yet?
No, it will be a mid-year adoption.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is the ARP funds presentation.
Mayor Volker, Mayor of City Council, just want, we have been through the process related to the ARP funding, and wanted your guidance on how we may use those funds. We've had a survey out, and, and I'll go through the survey results. Some of this I'll go through pretty quickly, because you've seen it, but just want to get your guidance on how we may allocate.
how we may allocate the funding for ARP and our recommendations. So as you recall, we, we've awarded four-point-five million dollars in federal American Rescue Funds. It was, it was your vision to use ARP funds to fund eligible transformative projects that address difficult community needs, and before selecting the projects, we wanted to hear from our community to determine their priorities. Just a reminder of the original eligible uses for COVID funds. This was, these five uses came out of the original interim guidance. There's some additional nuances to this that came out as far as the final guidance for the use of the funds, which you can see here, dealing with public health needs, invest in water and sewer infrastructure, premium pay, replace lost public sector revenue, and then address negative impacts in the community. We use your core values as a foundation for our survey, and also as we talk to community groups in the public. There was five, or excuse me, four core values that we felt really pertain to the ARP funding, being open, wanted to be open and transparent about how we were going to use the funding. We wanted to value all community members through promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion. We wanted to, we believe that environmental sustainability is critical to preserving the community for future generations. And then we value the lives of all community members and must protect them through collective action. So we use those four values and beliefs as the foundation for our survey and as we talk to the public. These were just some examples of how you could use the funding. Again, COVID to address public health needs, whether it be healthcare, resources, public assistance programs, building healthy environments, funding evidence-based programs, increase access to behavioral healthcare services, mental health, and substance abuse. I will say, for this particular category, the city has limited authority to do a lot of these things. A lot of these things in this category are associated with county government, and so we have very limited authority on how we can particularly use this category, but it was a category that we felt was important in the community. Invest in water and sewer infrastructure, these again examples. Make improvements to water and wastewater treatment facilities. We can expand wastewater collection systems to address failing septic tanks, replace water distribution pipes to eliminate lead service lines, consolidate small utility systems, and then stormwater collection system repairs and replacement. Just a few examples of how we may use some of these funds to invest in our water and sewer infrastructure. And then address the negative impact. We get, examples included, programs and services that address housing insecurity and homelessness, food assistance, emergency assistance such as burials, home repair, weatherization, rent and mortgage, and utility assistance, and job training, or just some examples of how we may work with community partners to, to provide those services. These are some things that we could not use the funding for, such as rainy day funds, put it into pension funds, debt service, general infrastructure spending, legal settlements or judgments. So there was some clear rules about what we could not use the funding for. Where we are, we did a public input. We had our, we were at the March twenty-twenty-two to get your goals, set your goals and objectives. In between March and April, we'll, we'll look at nonprofits and have them refine their applications. We'll come back to City Council in May for additional final setting of funding priorities, and then we ultimately have to appropriate all funding by December of twenty-twenty-four and have them all spent by December of twenty-twenty-six. So during the process, we've also hired a grant accountant to make sure we meet all the ARP legal and reporting requirements, and we're continuing to develop our internal process and compliance plans as required by the final rule. So we conducted a survey. We promoted it through the city website and social media. We did press releases, newspaper coverage, multiple TV and radio interviews. We had yard signs, flyers posted at city facilities, parks, library, port partnering organizations. We distributed rack cards. Information was available, or we had informational videos online, both in English and Spanish. We had direct notifications to city news subscribers, and we included in the downtown. So we tried to spread the word as much as we could about the survey. We also had a public input meeting here on February first, and we were here to answer questions and assist the community with providing input. We met with our diversity and inclusion committee. We went to the Building Bridges Group, which is a group of our local Hispanic community and service providers. We made a presentation there. We presented at the Rotary Club, the Kiwanis Club, and then we did Latinx-specific advertisements. So who did we hear from? We received, we had over twelve hundred survey participants with over six hundred opening to comments. So we felt really good about our participation rate and getting comments from our citizens about how we should spend these funds. We, obviously, the largest group was city residents. Forty-nine percent of our respondents were city of Hendersonville residents. Twenty-seven percent were, were others, other than folks that work for the city, own property in the city, or were a business owner. You can see there, our largest age group was the, were the higher tiers, were the, twenty-five percent were fifty-six to sixty-five-year-olds, sixty-five to seventy-five, and then seventeen percent were thirty-six to forty-five. So our largest groups were folks thirty-six and older who responded there. So we did have a little bit of gap there between the forty-six and fifty-five-year-olds there. Gender, sixty-four percent of the respondents were female, thirty-one percent male, four percent did not answer. And then you can see the, the race and ethnicity, eighty-five percent white, ten percent not to answer, two percent Latino, one percent Black and African-American, and one percent Asian. And there's some data on household income there. So what did we hear? The top three categories, according to what they think the money should be spent on, was one to address COVID-nineteen economic impacts, which was a focus on negative economic impacts, including economic harm to workers, households, small businesses, impacted industries in the public sector. So help those folks that were most impacted. Very close second was infrastructure investments. Invest in water and sewer infrastructure. Make necessary investments to improve access to clean drinking water and wastewater and stormwater system. And then the third category, again, was public health. Support of public health expenditures, funding mitigation efforts, medical expenses, behavioral healthcare, and certain public health and safety. So those were, if you looked at each category, that's how the category is ranked, one being to, to address COVID impact, and two being invest in infrastructure improvements. Yes, ma'am?
Do we know if Henderson County did a similar survey, since they have more impact to the public health sector?
I'm not aware that, that they have, I'm not aware. So.
Thank you.
Drilling down a little bit more on how we, the economic impacts, the largest number of survey respondents felt like we should look at spending money on affordable housing, affordable housing creation, look at food assistance programs and addressing food insecurity, and then coming in, following rank there, affordable childcare, out-of-school programming, helping the homeless population, supporting small businesses, rent and mortgage assistance, and then ultimately home repair. So they were, so very close, but the top two were affordable housing creation and food assistance programs and addressing food insecurity.
Can I ask a question, John?
Yes, sir.
Did, did I miss a slide?
It's next. I changed the order.
Okay, sorry. Well, no, because they're in different orders than what you, on this.
I thought you were like going off of memory.
Oh, my God.
No, and Jerry.
That didn't look right to you.
So, so the public health impacts is probably what you saw before, Jerry?
Yeah.
So the public health impacts were mental health programs ranked highest, and then medical care for uninsured and low-income were second, and then support for elderly adults was third there.
I think where my question was, yeah, so you divided it by topics. I was just looking at the numbers, like, you know, this ranking of literally one to two-point-three, two-point-four, and I apologize. I got you.
And then other impacts scoring the highest were water and sewer and stormwater improvement projects, youth educational programming, assistance for assessing or applying public benefit and services, legal services for underserved communities, and arts and organization program was the last in that group. So you can see the other, and how they ranked, how those ranked. Comment, comment themes, things that we heard from in the general comments. I think this stood out pretty well here. Is there, the question being, is there a specific goal or project that you'd like the City Council to consider when allocating ARP funds? The largest is affordable housing, and then you can see help, programs to help the elderly, lots of IAM supporters. Homelessness was a, a large number, as well as food assistance, water infrastructure, and sewer infrastructure were all received high marks as it relates to the comments, common words throughout the comments that were received in the survey. And then common themes we heard, housing being the largest, what I took from this particular graph is, is not only housing, but also they want programs that benefit families, benefit the community, benefit as many people as possible in providing assistance there. So. So this is, these are our recommendations going forward, and appreciate, ask for feedback here, is that we allocate two-point-five million dollars for salaries. And then we back up here before I, so one of the things that changed between the, the interim rule and the final rule is how the money can be spent. There was basically, if you receive less than ten million dollars, some of the regulations were lessened. It was not as restrictive. So we received additional guidance from the, from the federal government, how we could. So we would allocate, propose that we allocate two-point-five million of the four-point-five for salaries over the next two fiscal years, and also that would, this would also free up funding for other high-priority programs and projects. Secondly, we would allocate two million dollars specifically for two to four transformative community projects in suggesting these three categories. One would be economic impacts, which would be homelessness, food insecurity, affordable housing. Health impacts, although the health impacts, we have very limited authority. It may be that we would have to, we would have to partner with other organizations to carry that, but it'd be very limited in how we can do that. And then finally, use funding for water and sewer infrastructure, focusing on failing septic tanks, lead pipe replacement in the community. So that would be my recommendation there to look at those two to four projects, but use. And then reminders and next steps, the funds do not have to be committed again till December of twenty-twenty-four. It's to be spent by December of twenty-twenty-six. We'll have to follow any federal guidelines if, as it relates to how the funding is spent. We will have to leverage, remember, we can leverage the one-point-five-million-dollar Dogwood Trust grant we have. We also have CDBG grant funding, so we may be able to leverage some of those monies with this money. And then we'll work with nonprofits and other local governments to develop funding applications for transformative community projects. So I'll stop right there and answer any questions, any guidance you may have on how we may want to use this money.
How many requests do we have so far from nonprofits?
Do, I don't, do you know how many? Adam?
Mayor, for the ARP process, there are approximately thirty-four applications. So we haven't sent those back out to the nonprofit groups, but we're prepared to do those resubmissions whenever council is ready to receive them.
And that, that was from the original?
Yes, that was from the original process that began about this time last year.
Do we have, I know that I've recently seen a map with the locations of the failing septic systems and around the community. Do we have like a direction in town where an expansion of sewer makes more sense to kind of meet the needs of those failed systems?
So if I recall directly that map, the areas are really right around the ring of the city, all the way around us in all areas.
Okay.
I think, you know, there, there are a variety of ways you could approach it. I think the largest area is probably out Spartanburg Highway, Barker Heights area, going in that direction on the south end of town. If, if you look at the long-term growth of the city and those kind of things, we do have pockets. There's a pocket, in, in all areas of the city, there's some pockets off one-ninety-one, those kind of things. Topography becomes a little more challenging as you go out one-ninety-one, because you start rising in elevation in that particular area. But they're, they're basically, these subdivisions around the city, you have septic tank issues in, in many of them, right on the edge of the city.
And the health department also keeps track of all those as well, but that's.
That's, that's where we get our data.
But that's also a public health concern, you know, from that aspect, too.
Yes, yes.
Angie, I have a question for you, and I'm sorry I didn't think of it before the meeting.
Okay.
I apologize. If, according, if we wanted to say to a subdivision, hey, we have this big pot of money, you guys can all get on sewer for free for two years, like, you don't have to pay anything. We have the money to install whatever infrastructure needs to go into this neighborhood, but there's this little thing we got called annexation that goes with it. If we mix annexation with the sewer, is that going to be some way a violation of ARP regulations?
I don't think those things are related, no. But everybody, so you can't, it could be complicated. For instance, if it's not a contiguous annexation, you can't annex part of a subdivision?
Right, I'm aware of those rules, yeah.
Right, so then therefore, everybody would have to agree, or, you know, so, but, but as far as your question, the two are not related, because you'd just be installing an infrastructure project that we would own and operate.
It would have to be clearly voluntary, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, you'd have to decide that you're.
Or the sixty-six percent or whatever.
And also, though, it's.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I don't interrupt.
No, no.
And also, though, with regard to that, though, it, it would be, everybody'd have to be on board.
Right, that's.
You can't just pick this house and that house and that house.
If it's, right, I, I wouldn't recommend it anyway, you know.
No, no, I, I agree, but that's one of the challenges of saying we got this big pot of money, we can run all the pipes for free. You're just going to have to agree to come into the city. Then everybody's got to get on board with our, with the way the rules currently are for that to happen.
Correct. And, you know, you do have an extension policy.
So.
And that's, I think, what you.
So I think our preference would be to use this money to leverage your extension policy and your assessment process, where we don't put all of our money, other, the homeowners have, have the opportunity to, we pay a portion and the homeowners pay.
Subsidize it.
Subsidize it through assessment to allow you to spread your money out, because two million dollars in a sewer project will not go far at all, so.
No, I get it. I'm just trying to discuss what she said about the E. coli problem because of the failing septics.
Yeah, so what we, what we try to do is an assessment program where, again, the utility pays for part of it, and then the homeowners pay for it, but you're allowed to finance it. There's, there's provisions in the state law in our assessment to let the homeowners pay for it over ten years. Allows you to stretch your money out.
So I assume we're going to send the applications we've received back with some sort of.
Guidance.
Further guidance, that's not just like, it's a free-for-all. I like the three categories that you came up with. I feel like if you were to send me those three categories and what's going to have the longest, most transformative impact, and I had to write a grant around it, that seems like it would be pretty clear to me, and it may help weed some of the.
seems like it would be pretty clear to me, and it may help weed some of the project requests out, like maybe it's not a good fit for this money, maybe it could fit somewhere else, I don't know. There's a lot of applications to narrow down to two or four.
And also, technically, don't, I'm not trying to kick the can down the road, but technically, December of 2024 is when, is the drop dead decision date.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Well, actually, that's when the funds have to be committed, meaning contractually, so they have to be contractually obligated or committed, and then they have to be spent
By 2026. But it's committed, like we take these applications and, like, you get the money December 2024?
They have to have, they're bound by the same rules we are. They have to have contractually committed to spend them, I meant by 2024, and then the spend out. For individual assistance, I'm not sure how that would work, I'd have to look at that.
Gotcha. And we're sure the rules aren't going to change anymore?
No, we're not sure.
Okay.
Actually, though, we may have some flexibility depending on how we actually appropriate the money to build in some flexibility, if that's something that.
Yeah.
If we know what kind of flexibility that you're looking for, we can see if we can build that flexibility here. That's not a great answer, but, I mean.
The final rule gave cities in our condition a great deal of flexibility on how we spend this money. However, we're trying to be very conscious of what the citizens in their survey said they wanted to spend it on, but there is some flexibility. And how, and again, we, and I think to your point, Councilmember Smith, is we have time to develop good projects, we don't need to rush anything, and there's opportunities to find out how, figure out how we can use this money to have, to create the most transformative impact in our communities.
One other question I have, and that is, with ARP, is there a requirement that whomever we give this money, do they, do they have to be in the, like, have an office in the city, or anything like that, as far as the limitations on whether they're a city or a county, maybe a county organization that benefits the city? Does that matter as far as when we give our money out?
So you're largely going to be guided in spending this money by state law, because when we did the original presentation, I had pointed out that you overlap state law and federal law, and so state law is going to provide the most limitations on what we can do.
Like we always, like whenever we give special appropriations?
Correct.
Those rules still apply?
Correct.
Ah, okay.
So is it, I'm sensing the consensus is, is we use those three categories, allocate the money how we talked about, you're okay with that, and then we know that we'll seek further guidance as we go down the process, through the process. Everybody good? I'm good, okay.
Looks like it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you to all staff who pulled all of this together. All right, we are at the end of our agenda.
What?
We are adjourned early.
Madam, may I have something else?
Okay.
I'm so sorry.
We're unadjourned.
And, did you just adjourn?
We're at the end of our agenda.
No, no, but did you say we are adjourned?
I think I did, but what is it you?
Okay, so I apologize sincerely, but my daughter Martha has graduated from college on May the 6th, and I'm going to be gone all day. She has a 10 o'clock and a 10 a.m. and 6 p.m. activity, family and, you know, first child to graduate from college. So that is the all-day budget meeting, which I know everyone was so excited to attend on that day.
So excited.
And I apologize that I didn't figure this out before Sunday afternoon, but I did figure it out Sunday afternoon. And so I am asking if we can figure out a way to reschedule. There's just, there's no way I can even do it on Zoom, that would be impossible to do it that day. And so, first of all, I appreciate your patience, sorry I didn't bring it up sooner. Second of all, can we find another day?
I don't have a problem with Monday. That's fine. Does John have suggestions for Monday?
So, I mean, the easiest suggestion, and I'm looking toward my budget focus, is to go one week to the 13th of May, or do you, does that cause you, is that okay? You good? Uh-oh.
It tightens the legal timeline for when we have to have the budget available to the public for review, so we would really have to work out any major changes, but we could make it happen probably.
Or you go?
Can we just go Monday?
We'll have to be very prepared, I guess.
What about the ninth?
Which we can be.
The second?
May the 2nd?
There's May the 2nd or May the 9th, those are both Mondays. I think that's harder for Jen, though, right? Yeah.
John, we go back to the? Before.
What about the 29th? Of April?
April.
That works for me.
That works for me? That's basically the Friday before.
Yes. Is that? Yeah, that gives us more time to incorporate feedback.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So moving to April 29th, and I was going to apologize to staff, council members, I'm sorry, I did not catch this sooner.
That's all right. Problem solved.
I just wish I had, I could have figured this out in January, I just didn't do the math correctly.
Now are we re-adjourned?
Yeah.
Now we're done.
Mayor, I apologize for that.
That's all right. Rather get that taken care of now than a month from now.
And a lot easier on emails than on emails and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you take a picture of me and these students?
Yes.